I call an order, Rankin City Council meeting September eighth, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Scott.
Yep.
Councilmember Milner.
Present.
Councilmember Underwood.
Present.
Mayor Exley.
Here.
Councilmember Blackwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor here, Councilmember Riley.
She is coming. She just was on the phone with her. She is coming, but she won't be late.
All right, so tonight, our invocation will be given by Deacon Levi Scott, Councilmember Levi Scott from Goodwill Church. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Amen. Heavenly Father, come, thank you for guiding us through this day, Lord. Thank you for the start of this day. And Lord, we thank you for just keeping us. But all we ask for blessings, your mercy, and your guidance, Lord, for this city as a whole. Lord, we ask that you bless us through the decisions that we make today or any day that we come together, Lord, to be for the development of this community, not for just a generation, but for all generations to come, Lord. And Lord, we ask that you guide our offices, our offices, our fire department, all probably the safety, ask that you keep our staff, Lord, John to run, guide them, Lord. And Lord, we ask that you touch this council, and Lord, let things that they desire to be be fruitful for this community. And then, Lord, we ask that you continue to guide and watch over them, leave this place and travel to and forth, our places, our homes. Please, and oh, best and best in your name, amen.
Amen.
Ad弥恩，to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys, we'll start off with approval of tonight's agenda. There's a motion in order.
Send me.
Send it. I got a motion by Mr. Taylor, I got a second by Mr. Blackwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then we'll go to the motions in order for the August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five minutes. Does anybody have anything?
I had two spelling corrections, I know if I can see them, and I make a motion to approve.
I do have a comment. I didn't see it in the minutes, but I made a comment at that meeting when we were talking about the potential development in the area across street from Rankin Elementary. I spoke with the Board of Education, and the Rankin Elementary School has about almost three hundred students. They think it filled to that capacity, so I want to make this sure that's on record, because I did say that it was overcrowded.
Right.
But I said my motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Blackwell, I got a second by Mr. Milner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. So tonight, obviously, we say this every night, but public comments will have to pertain to agenda items only. Tonight, it's, we're doing a little something different. We normally don't have time to go over a lot of things that are going on in our city and talk about the money that we spend and where we spend it and how we spend it. So tonight, I am going to just discuss a little bit of that stuff, sitting with our staff today and working with them over the past week. We have, we have come up with some answers to some things that I think everybody should know, the public should know. We talked about transparency, and we just want to make sure that we're being a hundred percent transparent in the things that we do. So I'm going to come down and speak on a few things, and then we'll do, then we'll do council comments, and then as soon as council comments are over, we'll move into executive session if we have a need, okay? And obviously, I'll get Hadassah to help me with some of this stuff, because she is, she's the one that's the driving force of a lot of this, is our finance department. So anyway, I want to start, I want to start by talking about our general fund. You know, we, we have, we talk about reserves, and we've done, we've done a number of things to make sure that, that we, that we're handling our money properly for, for the residents of Rankin. One of the things, we had a recent study performed by Davenport. We were told that we should have four to six months' worth of reserves. And what that means is, in a city, if you, if we went four months, three months, whatever, and we didn't make a dime off of a water bill or anything like that, we'd have to have that much in reserve to cover our city, to pay our payroll, to pay our bills and those things. So, you know, in speaking to the city manager, he's always worked off of a twelve month. He, he would like to have a twelve month. Well, our city is in, in position, in a good condition right now, to be able to have that twelve months. So what that means to everyone in dollars is, when Hadassah came in, she started looking at our accounts. We obviously did not, we had money spread out everywhere. We were not getting interest on that money. We weren't drawing the interest that we can, that we should be drawing. So we've got that money moved into money market accounts now. So our general fund, right now, houses about seventeen million dollars, okay? And of that seventeen million, we would think that four million, based off of Davenport's survey, would be what we need to have in reserve. That's half of our annual budget, okay? So with the city manager saying, I would like to see a full year, that's eight million of that money, okay? So we originally talked about moving that money out of our general fund and putting it somewhere else, so that we would have a reserve account. But instead of having a reserve account, what we would rather do is take that money and leave it with that seventeen, keep that seventeen million, so that we draw the maximum amount of interest that we could draw, okay? So what, what we're going to do, what, what we're headed toward is Hadassah will create a policy, and it'll be a reserve policy for the city. And we'll bring that back here when we complete that. So I told her to come up with that date, because I know that we have budgets going on, we have audits going on, but we're going to try to finish that policy as soon as possible. And that policy will dictate what happens with that money. So if, if that eight million dollars is in there, it will specify how that eight million is spent and when it can be spent, okay? In the meantime, it'll be drawing interest that we will be able to spend as part of our general fund, and it'll just keep building. And we have yet to have to touch any of that, thank God. We have been working off of, you know, other, other money that we had, so. But now getting into, let's see, let me make sure I've got everything here. So we did talk about the reserve policy, and we'll be putting that, and like I said, you know, Hadassah, you can, you can let everybody know, you don't have to do it now, but she'll let everybody know when that reserve policy will be put into effect.
I anticipate it should be by the first quarter of next year.
By the first quarter. The other update that we, that we wanted to give is, I think we've sent back our 2023 audit information, so 2023 is, is ready to close. And then 2024 has a few questions before we can send that off. And then, once those questions are answered, and I think we're working on that now, once we get that back, then 2024 audit will be taken care of. And it's just important that we catch that up. And another thing that we, that we have, that we've talked about and Hadassah asked for, was this being, there being so many things that finances had to take care of. I think we went from seventeen accounts down to nine accounts. So we've done a lot of consolidating and doing, but what she wants to do is ensure that she has taken care of 2025. We ain't missed anything. So what she's going to do is, we're going to have someone come in and look over 2025 to ensure that 2025 is where it needs to be, because she has been, she's been here from the beginning of twenty-five, or pretty much.
January first.
Uh, January first, taking care of that. So anyway, that's our update on, on the audit side of it. And it's important that we do that, because we can't get, we can't ask for anything with not, you know, not having those audits completed. So everybody knows how important that is. The next thing that, that I want to talk about is, if you notice, the, we've got a, we've got a quadrant map here, and I've talked to people about this quadrant map over and over, about equity, spend equity in our city. Where, where we're spending our money in the city, you know, whether one area is getting more than others, what we need to, you need to fix it.
Keep moving.
Okay. Okay. And, and then, like I said, so if you look up here on the screen, you guys can probably see better on the screen, maybe a few projects that are going on in the area, and you'll know by street where we are and what we're doing. So that'll give you guys an idea. And then I'm going to give you the total spend, T-Sploß, Sploß, and general fund, that we are spending in each one of those quadrants, so that everybody knows, you know, what, how we're, we're focusing our dollars on, okay? And just to remind everybody, we, our T-Sploß was like twenty million?
Twenty million.
Twenty million. I think we've received nineteen million of that. We had ten million in the bond that we, you and I talked about the other day, that we, you know, we can spend it. But that's what we have currently until the next vote, until they vote on T-Sploß the next time, which, you know, a lot of people, a lot of people say, ah, T-Sploß, but when you hear what, what we're spending it on here, you'll get a better idea of why, why it's important that we have it, you know. It's helped us out a lot financially. So starting with the northwest quadrant, and, and another thing that you'll see is, you'll have a street that, say Seventh Street. Seventh Street will, will move from one quadrant to another. So we just took and split that money. So if, if part of Seventh Street is in the northwest, and, and then part of it's in the southwest, where it goes down, then you will see that we've split those dollars between those, so that you know exactly what that, what that dollar amount spent on Seventh Street. So I'll get, I'll dip right into this. So our northwest quadrant, our T-Sploß jobs for the northwest quadrant right now is our Seventh Street, uh, Street ditch regrading. And we have put, we have put a hundred thousand on the northwest quadrant side as far as what we're going to spend. Speaking to the city manager today, we look to probably have to add some piping in there, because some of our streets, the water flow is not going through, and I think some of the pipes are crushed, and there's, there's issues within them. So not just blowing them out, but also going in and probably having to replace some. So we want to make sure that that was, that that's put in there. And estimated completion date is obviously 2025, so we have to finish that by the end. Our Seventh Street utility project, that's water sewer, okay? That's going to come from water sewer fund. And in the northwest quadrant, we've, we've put eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's going out to bid very soon, if it's not already out to bid. That'll be, we'll be working on that. And I think that is, Levi, that is our grinder pumps. So, yeah, so we have.
Water sewer lines.
Yeah, and side lines there. So that's a huge project, you know, for us. And then the Giles Park revitalization. That revitalization, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred to complete the Giles Park revitalization. So adding the things that we need to add there. We got lights donated to us, which would have probably cost us, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We're going to be getting them this week.
Yeah, so we, so we have those, we'll be getting those this week. And that'll be the LED lights for, and, and our, and we're, the football field is going to be there. So we're looking at having, we're looking at next year, having that completed, so that, you know, so that we can actually get some stands out there and start having our football program going out there. Because I don't know whether you guys realize how big our storm and our renegade football program is, but it is, it's huge. And, and we're, and there's a lot of stuff coming from Effingham County now our way, so we've got a lot of folks involved in that. So that, we've put a hundred twenty-three, a hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred. West Fifth Street resurfacing. That project is estimated in 2026. That's a T-Sploß project. We're looking at two hundred ninety thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars on that West Fifth Street resurfacing. West Sixth Street resurfacing, same thing, 2026. And that West Sixth Street resurfacing is four hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So that's what we've put aside for T-Sploß money for that. We have a Highway twenty-one speed limit study, which is going to fall under T-Sploß, and that's going to be about forty-nine hundred dollars, and that's in progress right now. We have pump lift station, pump and lift station upgrades. That's going to come out of our water sewer fund, and that's about twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's ongoing. And we got those numbers from our public works. And you'll see, as we go through this, we're going to find that there's more dollars allocated, because the lift stations are in more shape in some other areas. So we'll find that that dollar amount will go up in, in other areas. It's the Unified Development Ordinance, the, our UDO, the revamp of that. That's out of our general fund, and we've put thirty thousand dollars in that. That is from each quadrant. So we just separated that money through, you know, all four, all four areas of the city, is what we done there, because that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Mayor.
Yes?
Turn the microphone towards you.
It's unplugged.
It's unplugged?
Yeah, it's unplugged, so I just have to yell.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. And so the development of North Park, those plans are still in, in, in progress. So we're, we're working on North Park. North Park is the eighty-five acres that we were donated outside, going outside the, just before the railroad tracks.
I want to make sure people hear this.
Yeah. Patriots Park, that is Sploß money. We spent, or we have two hundred seventy, seventy thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. What we're not complete with in Patriots Park is, we have, we have some restaurants that need to go out there, because we've had porta johns out there forever. And we're also looking at putting a splash pad in, so that people can enjoy that when they go to the park as well during the summer. So those are, those are items that's possible, you know, possible add-ons. And then East Long Street resurfacing, that's T-Sploß. That's four hundred and five thousand dollars, and that's estimated 2026. East Shaw Street resurfacing, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, that's estimated 2026. We have West Shaw Street resurfacing. West is two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, 2026. East Johnson Street resurfacing, that's sixty-five thousand dollars, and that's 2026. And we have West Johnson Street resurfacing, and that's three hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, and estimated 2026. So we'll get, and I think, Mr. City Manager, that's what we're going to do. We're going to bid that, we're going to bid all that as a, as a whole. So when we bid those nine streets that we're doing or whatever, they will all be bid as, as a group. So, and then we also have on here for that northwest quadrant, the new library, which will, whenever that takes place, that'll be funded by, that's county funded, so we won't really have any stake in that, but we will hope that we have.
Possibly infrastructure.
Yeah, and we have a board member. So we'll, you know, that's one of the things that we have on that. So when we look at the total for the northwest quadrant, our total is three million two hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And that is, that is overall money that we have in, in that, in that particular quadrant. That is every, that's everything to do from our water sewer, our Sploß, and our T-Sploß, okay? So I'm going to move into the southwest quadrant, which, southwest quadrant, yeah.
Oh, in, in the northwest.
Yeah.
That include, that's coming, Middle Ground Road. We got a spur, that spur we talked about, that goes off of Hardy Road, the one we talked about last week.
Yes.
That's going to be, I know we hadn't had it timed enough to fund it, to look at funding. Do we need to move that into an emergency?
We can't fund it until we own it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But we need to look at, at the emergency, to get those signatures, whatever we need to maintain that, because if that road is, it's so bad now, so if an avalanche, a fire truck goes down, it's not going to make it.
It'll bog down.
But they try to give it up as private.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's all we have to do is, and I say.
I think they've already, they're pretty close.
So, you know, that's, we thought we were.
Put together to have the site.
It's Hardy Road. It's going out Middle Ground, it's that last road. Yeah. But, but, but like I said, the, yes, sir.
What you saying, they're going to have to give that road up for y'all to maintain it?
That's right. For us to, for us to pave it, they have to give that road up. They have to give us the easement, because it's all private property.
That's not the private.
You can't work on, you can't work on private property.
We can't.
It's not a private driveway.
That's, that's what it is, until they give it.
We can't do that without your approval.
We've got a couple of other studies being done, and, and we've got a good group that does that. And that study, we're looking at about fifty-eight thousand seven hundred to get that, that study completed, and get information back to us on that crosswalk. And then the, and then there's a Ninth Street resurfacing project, and we put five hundred thousand on that. It may be a little less, it may be a little more, because that is, we're doing that in conjunction, in partnership with the county. So we, we kind of just estimated that based off of the length that we would be.
And that's both sections, east and west.
And that's east and west, yeah.
And your timeline for that?
The one with the county is going to be early fall.
Yeah, estimated early fall, and that, like I said, that's the combination. So with the southwest quadrant, we, we kind of see that there's not a whole lot of stuff involved in that, but our total spend in that area is two million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, okay? So that, that will, that will be where we are, give or take a little bit, in that quadrant. So now we've addressed this quadrant and this one here. And you kind of see, if you look at the red line, there's not a whole lot, and I can kind of show you maybe here. Oh, yeah. So I'll kind of show you here. This is where the city limits, city limits are right here. So you see how big, how much city limits is within this quadrant, and then you see where it goes here, and then here. But this is, uh, this is what's, only thing that's in this quadrant. Obviously, we look to hopefully annex some of that property and, and continue to grow our city, because that's how we base our, you know, our, our dollars in Sploß and, and T-Sploß off of that, right? Am I correct?
Population.
Okay, it's population. So, so now we'll go to our southeast quadrant, which is down on the bottom right. In our southeast quadrant, we have Veterans Park rehabilitation. That's done with Sploß money. That was five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. That job is complete right now. Freedom Park improvements, that's Power Pole and the barn there, was thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. That is complete there. You know, of course, you know that that's where we do, you know, a lot of our events and fair and stuff like that, so we, we really need to invest in, in that area. Karp Pass, Walking Pass, Bike Path, that job is complete now. That was one point nine million four, four thousand dollars, forty-eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Willow Peg sidewalks, that was T-Sploß. That is a hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cent. We talked about that. That goes to our amenity. That is ninety-five percent complete, and we used combination of Sploß and T-Sploß, which our Sploß money going to that was very minimal. It was twelve hundred and eighty-three dollars. Fort Howard sidewalks, it rolls into another quadrant, but that was a hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cent. That job is complete right now, and that was T-Sploß dollars. Fort Howard crosswalks, which is in progress, that's the reason why we're not starting on the other crosswalks, because we have, they started on that with their survey based off of school and things that are going on down there. So that was fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. That's the same dollars we put aside in the, in the last quadrant. Fort Howard Speed Study, that's part of our T-Sploß. That was eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, and that is in progress currently. Waterline extension, that, when, and, and I'll, and we'll make this available, but the waterline extension, I think, is around five point six million, and that is moving our, our pipe from one end of Cheney Road all the way down to Old Augusta. So from our city limits, we want to square that off, and we want to be able to provide water down that road, and then we can, then we can start looking at, you know, annexation of, of those areas as well, okay? So that waterline extension, we do have, Jody, y'all can correct me, but I think we do have some money put aside, maybe a million of it right now.
Through Buddy Carter's office.
Through Buddy Carter's office. We have, they have given us a million. I think we have reached out to, we reached out to Senator Ossoff, Warnock, and we've asked everybody to donate, you know, to, to come up with the money to help put that in place. And again, just to add this, we, you know, we want to slow things down so that we can build our infrastructure. But we have to depend on these, these guys that are not in the city of Rankin. We, we, we can't make those calls. And people blame council all the time for traffic and things like that. We have nothing to do with that. We can't approve it. We can't do anything like that. We can't move it up on the list. All that is done on a state level. So when, when, when you guys talk to your state representatives, you need to talk to them about how do we get, how do we relieve traffic, okay? I have no problem asking them. I asked them in the state of the city while they were sitting there, okay? I have no problem. But that's where that's going to come from, okay? So we'll, we'll move to the Highway, Highway twenty-one South sidewalks. That was T-Sploß. That was seven hundred and three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, and that was completed. So we completed that project. Pump and lift station upgrades, water, that's water coming out of our water sewer. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a lot more than the other, because we have more problems there. So Josh and his team went through and evaluated them, and that's the money that we're going to have to spend in that area to get our lift stations up to, up to snuff. And remember, when these guys come on board, I don't think we had but one pump working in the city, am I right?
That's.
And it wasn't working efficient.
No.
So remember that, and then I think, how, how many do we have total?
Twenty-one.
So twenty-one. So I want you to think about how many pumps that we did not have working in the city when these guys came on board. And, and, and so we're, you know, we're doing a lot of things. Those guys are doing a lot of things that, so sometimes when you sit back and go, golly, man, they ain't cutting the grass on the, you know, in the, in the, in the median. They're getting pumps running. They're moving water. They just found beaver dams that, that we had blocking the water in, on tractor supply, where you were coming down and that water was building up right there. That was a beaver dam. We sent people out. They knocked it down. The water started flowing, and it kind of dissipated. I think we still got some more cleaning to do to get it to fully move, and we obviously got more beaver dams, and the city manager's working on that. And it, and it is a, it is a problem. It's a problem. With all this water, I guess they've all decided, okay, we got to stop it up and keep it for a while. So that's what they're doing. They got a plan.
They like the neighborhood too.
Yeah. They, they got a plan, and we got a plan to fix it. So anyway, we'll move into Highway twenty-one speed limit study. That's T-Sploß. Remember, I had forty-nine hundred dollars put aside there. That is, that's in progress. One of the things that we added today, we want to make sure that when we start talking about, you know, we went all the way down Ninth Street with our sidewalks. We went down Fort Howard with our sidewalks. We want to make sure that we, that all, all of our main highways go into certain things, our main streets go into certain things and have sidewalks. So we have added, we added Wise and Baker sidewalks in here, and we put it at three hundred thousand dollars, okay? There may be some, talking to the city manager today, he's going to get with, he's going to get with our engineer, and they may tell us that we don't have enough property, that we may have to request some easement to get that. If we do, then we'll, you know, obviously we'll go down that road. But right now, we put three hundred thousand dollars on that project, and the revamp of the Development Ordinance, our UDO, that's another thirty thousand dollars out of our general fund that is already completed. And now our, our UDO, if I'm understanding, it's ever-changing.
Yes, sir.
So you'll, you'll see that money has to be spent on that, and that'll come out of our general fund whenever we upgrade or whatever we need to do to it. So now, in that quadrant. So now, in that quadrant, um, in that southeast quadrant, that puts us at three million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. That's what we have spent, that's what we will have spent when we finish everything in that particular quadrant. Um, now we move over to the northeast quadrant. So there's our northeast, um, our northeast quadrant, uh, Fort Howard Sidewalks, some of that comes in. Remember, we split that money. So the, the Fort Howard sidewalk, uh, is T-sploß, that was a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. That job is complete. Um, we also have the Fort Howard Crosswalk in there because there'll be another crosswalk money. Um, that was one, uh, one million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. That was phase one, uh, phase two is to begin in twenty-twenty-six. Uh, obviously, phase two is not, nowhere near what we did in phase one, but you gotta remember. McCumber Park and Giles Park, due to whatever reason, had not had any funding, any upgrades for years. I can tell you that, you know, I hit softballs out there in the nineties, and it was the same dugout, the same fields, the same bleachers, you know, in the dugouts, all of that was the same whenever I did it then as to when we just upgraded. Um, the concession stands were never upgraded, we upgraded concession stand. Um, this is an amenity, and we need to think about our youth, and we need to think about what we spend. And I told everybody that during the State of the City, uh, between the hours of four and eight o'clock on school nights is when kids get in the most trouble. Where we want them, we want them in a ballpark, that's where we want them. So that's, that's our, that's our plan, is to invest in our youth and give them a place to go, you know? They need to have a place to go. So that, so that one point three million dollars was put out there, and guess what? We had two tournaments the previous year, we're at twenty-five tournaments right now for this year. And I just got a call from a lady who asked me about umpiring that wants to bring another ten this year. And then she wants to look at next year and go ahead and get on, on the board for that. And that's a whole nother group out of Columbia, South Carolina, uh, that, that wants to come down and do tournaments here because they like the area.
That's an economic thing.
And what that means for is that means the restaurants in town, every dime that they spend here, those things come to us. So when they come here, they eat, they spend money, and that's what, that's what we want. So we really need to start looking at, at, at things like that to... Because we don't have but a few amenities, and then the rest of it's on us to, you know, create those dollars or beg for them. Um, East Johnson Street Resurfacing, we had East Johnson on another one, um, but that's T-sploß money, and that's, uh, estimated twenty-twenty-six, and that's, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, Williams Street Resurfacing, uh, that's T-sploß, and that's seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, uh, and that is estimated twenty-twenty-six. Um, we had the Highway, uh, twenty-one Speed Survey, which is broke down into all four. Um, that's that forty-nine hundred that we talked about. Lexington Highway Future Sidewalks, we can't get to our ballpark. We can't get to our ballpark. They say if we need to park somewhere and walk to our ballpark, we couldn't do that. So if parking's full, then we're walking down the sidewalk trying to get there. Um, we want, we want this, we want this city walkable. Um, so Lexington Avenue Future Sidewalks, that's T-sploß, and, uh, we're looking at about two hundred and seventy-five thousand on that job. And the start date's currently undecided on that. That's, that's kinda like our Wise and Baker, but we want, but we wanna talk about it. And we wanna put it in our overall dollars, so when we talk, when we discuss the overall dollar in a second, you'll, you'll know what that is. Uh, pump and lift station upgrades in that quadrant, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, that's ongoing. And then our UDO revamp in that area is, um, is completed already, but we put thirty thousand. So in that particular quadrant, it was two million, seven hundred, twenty-nine thousand, uh, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. So that's, that's what that quadrant gives us. So when we look at all the quadrants and we look at our spend for each quadrant in, in our city, um, we look at our northwest quadrant was three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, our southwest is two million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Our southeast was three million, nine hundred, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. And then our northeast quadrant is two million, seven hundred, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. So that's the equity that we have throughout the quadrants in the city. Obviously, some of these quadrants are smaller with less activity going, and that money will be limited. But our main thoroughfares and where everything else is going on, you see that we've distributed that money in a very equitable manner, uh, when it's based off of, of the needs of the residents. Um, so our total T-sploß dollars that we spent, um, is if we complete all the tasks that we have, the Wise and Baker sidewalks, the Lexington sidewalks, when we finish every one of these projects, our, our estimated T-sploß spend and some of it we've already spent is eight million, uh, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents. So that would be our, that's where we are on our total T-sploß spend if we complete every project in every quadrant. And we have twenty million dollars in T-sploß money. So what I would think that we would do when we finish, uh, when we finish going through our, um, when we finish going through our streets for this year, that we will add streets for the following year that will absorb some of that money. We will also, something that we don't have now, and that me and the city manager talked about today, is we wanna see, you know, we're seeing right now where it says Seventh Street, Ninth Street ditch regrading. That's T-sploß money, that, we should, we should, it should be equitable. So we don't hear anything about our southwest quadrant having any ditch money because that's where we started, is, is where we had a lot of problems. So we wanna make sure in the, in the coming years, you know, that we have those ditch digging pro- projects along with our street resurfacing projects in those quadrants so that when we come up here and talk to you about it, you know, people know that, okay, Wise and Baker's gonna get, they're gonna get some, uh, ditch digging projects completed. And, and what we're gonna do is put that down as preventive maintenance. Because right now, and up until now, we've had no preventative maintenance at all. It's been who screams allow us? And we run over there, and then this guy screams allow us, and we take off over here and we dig a ditch out. We need to finally get to where we look like we know what we're doing. And this is the way that we do that. You know, we, we put a schedule together and we follow that schedule. And that's what I like about, you know, what Josh and them are doing on the lift pumps, is they have a plan. They, and, and they're gonna take care of those projects, uh, as, as they go along, and they're gonna go from worst to, to the best on that. So that's how we wanna see our ditch projects go. Um, so out of all these projects, um, our general fund spend is, uh, we look at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars because the only thing that we had that comes out of general fund is the, uh, is the UDO. Everything else is paid for by something else. Our water sewer, um, is looking at about one point nine million, uh, is, is what we're gonna spend out of our water sewer to take care of the, the projects that fall underneath that, uh, in there. And our sploß spend is about one point three million, uh, that we'll have coming out of our, our sploß, uh, spend for the, for the items that I talked about that, that hit that sploß. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about is, uh, uh, talking to the city manager. Um, there are a lot of things to tackle in this city. And there, and, and one of the biggest things that we will tackle is, is our reuse water. Is how do we, how do we handle that? How does, how does our sewer, uh, how does our sewer plant, our treatment plant treat that and then get it back out, okay? Right now, Robbie, what is it, one, one million?
One million.
One million a day max is where we at now as far as processing that water, uh, that reuse water every day. Um, what we have done is, uh, there's a, there's a grant that we, that we have received that is, I think it's about fifteen million, right? And it's, we've got to follow this process very close for this fifteen million. And this fifteen million has to be spent by October, uh, of twenty-twenty-six. So it is something right now that with all these projects going, if we, if we just said today, we stopping every project, that's the project that we can't stop, okay? That has to go on. And, and talking to the city manager today, when we get to the end of that project, we've got to be looking at another one point four to one point six million processing. So we've got to, we've got to upgrade our plant.
The new plant.
The new, we've gotta have a new plant.
Upgrade the existing with equipment upgrades with the fifteen million, and that'll get us to one point four million gallons per day.
Okay.
What the plan is, is once we get there, October twenty-twenty-six, we'll start the engineering process for one point six million gallon per day plant, that'll be a construction of a new plant. We're gonna mirror with the plant we have, carousel plant, construction of a new plant, and that'll give us three million gallons per day of wastewater treatment.
And that'll, that'll, that'll take care of us forever. I mean, I, you know, we'd have to really grow to, to, to process that much. But, but, um, one of the things that, one of the things that, that our city manager brought to the table is when he looked at this, he dove deep into it. And, and, uh, and, and all the meetings I went to with him, um, how important it was to continue. We have a plant operators that probably function. Um, I would say our plant operators probably function better than any plant operators or as good as any plant operators that anybody's ever seen. I mean, um, what they do over there, uh, you know, Robbie's seen it for twenty years in, in another city. Um, we have, um, the engineers that look at this thing that do it all over said, we ain't never seen nobody handle a, take care of a plant like they take care of a plant. So, um, these upgrades, we wanna continue with the same plant, and these upgrades will, will fold over and save us additional dollars when we, when we do the, uh, the new plant. But, um, we're gonna obviously ask for funds, uh, from the state, from, from everybody, I think, to try to get that other plant, uh, built. Um, but those are things that we need to have time to do. And this, uh, four, this four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand that they're saying that they're gonna be able to get us off of the re- revitalization of this plant, this will give us the time to ask for that money and to get those things taken care of so that, um, it's not a huge expense. And, um, our city manager also came up, you know, he said, we don't have a, uh, Robbie, I'll let you explain that, um, how that works, how our work.
Oh, over the years, the city of Brinkin hasn't had a wastewater treatment plant fee, which is any new construction that comes in, it's a one-time fee that the builder, whether they're building homes or they're building commercial space, they pay a wastewater treatment plant fee that goes into an account for upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. So the wastewater treatment plant fee has been implemented. It doesn't affect anyone that lives here, anyone that, anyone's bill that lives here. It's only new development that pays a one-time fee that goes in for the future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. What people don't realize, most people they flush or tote, they don't think about where it goes. But a one point six million gallon wastewater treatment plant is gonna cost about forty million dollars. And that's a heck of a price. Effingham County's just came in, and they had a two million gallon plant that came in at forty-two million dollars for their plant that they're building. So you have to, the, the planning process for an expense like that has to be long-term planning. And in order to get that money, all this new development that's coming, they need to pay their share of what they're gonna put into that plant. So that's, that's the process we're going on. And we're still gonna need the federal government, we're still gonna need some funds to get this done in a proper manner. But that money will be collected, it'll always be collected and go into that wastewater treatment plant fee. So any future upgrades, we could dip into the wastewater treatment plant money that, that developers pay, so.
So that's, uh, that, that's why that is the biggest thing that's on our plate right now. And, and again, that is, uh, those are subject to fines if we don't, if we don't move it. And that's the reason why, that's the reason why we purchased a golf course, that's the reason why the golf course is so important. Um, that's, we talked today about, you know, um, and, and the city manager said it best, and I think I've said it a few times. If the golf course don't make a dime, it's served its purpose. And, you know, one of the things that, uh, Hadassa said was, is, well, you know what? If we got it, we need to, we need to make some money with it, right? So, you know, the city manager's right. If, if we don't make a dime off of it, it still, uh, serves the purpose of keeping our fine away, okay? Um, and Levi was here for, you know, all of that, so you remember when it happened. Um, and like I said, Hadassa's looking at this thing as, okay, now we gotta figure out how to generate money. The only way you can, the only way you can generate money is, is, uh, is spend money. So you've gotta spend some to generate. So if you got a lemonade stand with a sign out there that says lemonade, and you ain't got no lemons, then you ain't gonna make no money. So you gotta buy lemons to have a lemonade stand. So we're gonna have to continue to rebuild and add to be able to, to get those dollars. And, um, I think that, uh, I think that she is all over the top of that, uh, now. Um, I'm very happy, pleased with what we talked about today with our reserve, um, how that looks. Uh, the city's in really good shape. Um, again, from all those accounts down to what we have now, um, the audits are, the audits are going strong, and she has some other ideas. And I wanted her to tell you guys, um, and maybe she, uh, I'm probably throwing this on your lap here, but you, um, you had talked about what we were drawing in interest every month in, in that general fund account.
Yes, it is about between fifty to sixty thousand dollars a month right now.
So that's what we're drawing in just interest. And then I hear people that armchair quarterback and go, well, what, we could be making sixty-five? Okay, we could be, right? But the first thing that we gotta do is fix all the problems that we have. So when we fix all those problems, then Hadassa can go in there and she can start looking at different money market accounts and places to move the money as, as we see the interest rates change in other areas. The first thing that we need to do is make sure that we're receiving that money, and we what? We had money split in seventeen accounts, and we weren't drawing hardly anything off of it. So she came in. And so we just have to remember that, yes, we wanna get better, and yes, we could be doing more, but that interest, that's a lot. And I want you to think about sixty thousand dollars a month, what that puts into our general fund and what we can fix with that, what we can spend, and, you know, the, the items that we have that we, that we need to fix in our city. So that's what that interest is. And, you know, I'm not so sure, uh, Mr. City Manager, how that works when you, when you balance a budget and then you start getting that interest, do you project that interest?
You have to ask her.
Is that how you do, you project that interest?
You project an estimate.
So we just project an estimate, and that's how you balance your budget. So, um, but I think that that's huge because I know that we wasn't getting sixty thousand dollars in interest when she got here. So only thing we can do is back up and, and, and now, we'll start from where she was and not back up because we can't, you know, we can't make it all better. So, um, that's all I've got tonight. I wanted to, I wanted to share that with everybody, and, and I wanna know that, I want everybody to know that we are, you know, these guys are on top of everything. And this council, this council is, is, is holding people accountable for making sure that these items are done and making sure that we, that we bring forth the answers to the questions that everybody has. So, and being transparent, I don't know that anybody's ever stood up here and talked to you guys about exactly how many dollars we were spending and where it's going, but we will continue to do that. I will continue to do that for the next four years while I'm here regardless. Um, I wanna make sure, and I think, you know, uh, talking to Mr. Taylor a while ago, she said, oh my gosh, I think it's great. I think it's great that we're putting that information out so everybody can see what we're spending and how much is left. So, and, and what our future pro- plans look like. And if somebody thinks that, okay, well, this street may need it, or this, this area may need it, and you've got an idea, reach out to a council member and say, hey, do you mind, uh, putting that information on the transparency portal of fixing this or doing that? Have a conversation with them, they're open to having a conversation with you. And then all they can do is bring it in here, and we can put it in, in this, if it fits, then we put it in. So those are things that we can, we can accomplish. And, um, I just wanna, you know, uh, I wanna say that thank you to Hadassa with what she is, what she has accomplished and, um, you know, and the pressure that we have, uh, that we've put on because we've, we've put a lot of pressure on, and they've made a lot of changes in there. And, um, I mean, down to we've changed the water bills, the way they look, um, how we do things, and we'll just continue to make those changes. And so now, what I'm gonna do is I'll start with Councilman Scott and then get his thoughts on things and then anything that he's gotta add to this.
The only thing I'd like to, my hat's off to staff, uh, and, uh, I guess, got in there, we knew it had some problems in there, but we stayed different and off.
I wouldn't let her go there.
And, and, and that's the thing that, that helps the council, being able to see and know where the fundings are and how you can use the funding. Uh, we've got a lot to do in this city and, uh, and this council, this council's been great. But that's the idea of councils, councils is to come onto and build and, and prove what the past council had. Councils is to come onto and build and improve what the past councils have started. That's what councils are about. And, and we're just glad that you stayed, been able to go in and look at the numbers. I mean, sometimes we jam you up in the corner sometimes, but thank you for putting up with us. And Jody, you, we're not gonna give Robbie Nellie credit. But anyhow, we, we, we proud of the staff. Oh, am I? For coming on board, and really getting to work. We know you have a lot, you still got a lot here.
Absolutely.
But we all working, I think we'll make it, we'll make it through. And that's about all I have.
All right. Mr. Miller?
Been on council now for coming up on a year. And as our city manager stated many times, he puts people in place to do the job. And I think he's done a fantastic job putting people in place. I've learned things on what to and not to do while in council. And my phone goes through the city manager, but I do like to pop in and say, hey, you know, doing a good job. And to, to our staff of everybody, that's wrecked wastewater, I mean, every staff we have, y'all are what makes this city tick. And the stuff that you found, wow. People don't really understand when, when, when you find an account with X amount of dollars in it, and you executed, you invested time to find out what we need to do to move forward. I mean, it does help us. And then please, I just want everybody to know, when we ask questions, we are not in any way, shape, or form trying to question you or your department is because we truly want to understand so that we can go to the public, you know, if we're asked those questions. But my hat's off to everybody in the city. Thank you so much.
Well, this is the curious girl. I ask way too many questions, and I always will, but it's, it's our job to know, and I think the staff's always kind and always willing to, to answer our questions. Everybody, I mean, Terry and Jody have been here from the start. I don't want us to miss Terry and how she's been on the ground floor of all the dreams and most of these projects and helping seeing them to fruit. She's not with us tonight, but we don't want to miss thanking her too. Jody and Hadassah and Dulcina, we don't want to forget you either over there in the corner. All of our staff is absolutely amazing. We are dreamers. I think we're all visionaries. We all have an idea of what this city's gonna look like in 25 years, and we want to help grow it to that. We came in, I, I don't think past councils have the, have the opportunity or the money to dream. But we're dreaming, and, and we're dreaming for the best city possible. Thank all of y'all for all of this. Y'all did a fantastic job. We just can't say enough. And it's only gonna get better and busier, and busier.
We, we should also thank our stick of the mud over there. Thank you.
Welcome. You know, I haven't told you, parody, you appreciate. He'll bill you for it.
That's exactly what's about.
Thanks, Tim.
Oh, I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to Robbie.
But in, in actuality, that's just another part of, you know, Brady and I say it all the time, we want the smartest people in the room. And I think all of the mayors been part of that process, getting a good attorney firm in here
Absolutely.
to guide us and keep us out of trouble where, where possible.
That's very kind.
So anyway, but, and I've got something else you want to come back to me?
Yeah.
I think our previous council members, members have said everything that the staff has done a superb job. I mean, all the department heads, assistant city manager, the city manager and attorney too, but they all have to work together as a team to pull all these projects together so that we can spend our money wisely on improvements like sidewalks, streets, ditches, water, sewer lines, and so forth. And so, and we listen, have to listen to y'all, the citizens also. So I get a few phone calls every now and then. Just a couple weeks ago, when we had all that heavy rain, I got some calls about some flooding over in the Wiesenbaker area and right by City Hall over there too. So I got, called city manager, got on Citizen Central, and EOM got over there and worked on it. And next thing you know, they found a sinkhole in the middle of Wiesenbaker and got that fixed the next day too. It still needs a little pavement, but I know they gotta get, it takes time to fill holes like that, to settle and get it repaired. But still, just a great shout out to all the staff members and attorney and city manager and my fellow council members for getting all this work done. And for the mayor explaining it all, and where all our money's going.
That's right.
My turn. Well, you know, I'm gonna be vocal. First of all, I want to take the first 50,000 dollars we got and get rid of that eyeball and get some good stuff where people can hear and see us properly. But it also takes a council that has a vision for the city and works together with our city staff. It's amazing what we've got done in a short time, and we just want it to get better. And we truly work hard for you guys. So, thank you.
I just want to say that the teamwork and transparency between council and the staff, none, none, none of this would have been possible. The last year and a half would not be possible if it weren't for us all working together. And I do appreciate the openness and the honesty, and sometimes it's not always pretty, and that's okay. That's okay. There's a mutual respect from, from, I think, our side to the staff's side, and I feel that in with them as well. So I do appreciate all of, all of you.
I think we have, we have one thing that, that Mona wanted to add to, to this about the
I, I wanted, I wanted to share first that I went to, I, I represent the city on the MPO, and I went to Robbie after the last meeting and said, Robbie, Mona doesn't belong on the MPO. One of our staff does or someone, and we actually have a little meeting with somebody. So Robbie actually asked Kenley Horn, you want to explain that, Robbie?
We, we had, with our traffic engineers, Kenley Horn and Chris Marsagel, and I asked him if he would be our liaison or our representative at the MPO. He was all for it, so he's gonna write us a lot.
Can I, can y'all tell us what the MPO is?
Well, the Metropolitan Planning Organization is the organization's, is, is
It's a, it's an organization that you have to be involved with if you're gonna get federal funds or do a team.
And they insisted it be an elected official on that board.
And if that's the case, if they push that, I know Chairman Ellis in Chatham County has pushed it on, in the Chatham County side. I don't know if he'll do it in this side, as long as our consultant represents us and he's a paid employer, he's a paid consultant. But that, we, we, we're gonna find that out. So what I'll be doing is bringing up, and the good thing about him, he knows the lingo, he knows the DOT, he knows Chatham County, he knows how to, how to, it's a, and Ms. Underwood was 100% correct. It's a different world when you go down there. But you have to know how that money's delegated to different projects, how they give it out, and what you have to do to get it. It's not, it's not as simple as you would think it was.
And the minute Robbie mentioned it to him in the meeting, he just starts saying, oh, well, you know, I mean, he was amazing. If we had low-income areas, Section 8 housing, those are ones that federal funds jump all over to help with sidewalks and stuff. I wouldn't have known that. They were telling us about a local area project certification, procurement certification. They were going all this stuff, and I'm writing down notes thinking, I, I just went back to Terry and said, here. I mean, wasn't it? So.
It's, they say elected officials to fill a seat. Elected officials don't, don't, aren't knowledgeable enough to be sitting in that position and bring the benefits back to be disvalued. So if we're able to get Mr. Marsagel, who y'all met here, he comes up and speaks when Kenley Horn comes, if he, if he's able to do it, I will bring you a proposal for him. I mean, it shouldn't be much at all, because it's only, what, once a quarter?
It's once every other month. Every other month, it's like two hours.
Yeah. So, and he's there anyway, nine times out of 10, he's there.
And, and it's just the better person. They are, it's not that I don't want to represent the city, but after that, when they started hitting 26 funding, and said, this is what you need, and here's your packets. If you have any questions on the application of federal funds, let me know when I'm sitting. I'm sending stuff to Terry on my phone, and I went back and I said, they're wrong, this should not be elected officials. So that's
It needs, it needs to be somebody knowledgeable about that funding process.
Yes.
Yeah, because we need to get that fund as much as we
As, as much, so money from them is possible.
Absolutely.
That being, and that being the case, since I won't be busy on that, many of you know that I've been very vocal about the odors on Ebenezer. I went vocal on news programs. I insisted that Terry looked into things like making sure that there's no forever chemicals or toxins or combustibles manufactured or processed in warehouses in our city. I've been very vocal on that. And the Emergency Management Agency has got a steering committee together to work on trying to address the odors on Ebenezer Road, and they would like a representative. And since that's been kind of something I've been involved in, I'd like to see if y'all are okay with me being, going to those meetings and representing us for that.
Sure.
So if that's all right with council.
So you're gonna get Kenley, Kenley Horn on the, he's gonna get Kenley Horn on to the liaison together?
Yes. And then I'll, if that's all right with everybody, I'll go to the steering meetings.
It makes sense to have somebody like Kenley Horn that understands the money, the process, the way to get grants from the federal level to benefit our citizens and the city.
Well, go ahead.
I would be remiss not to also commend the public service that we have in our community. The Fire and Police Department, every day they put their lives on the line for our community. And when I hear those sirens on or prayer goes out, that they come back saying thank you to Fire and Police for all you do.
All right. So we'll, we'll move from that to, if there's a need for executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. And move.
Whatever, whichever one's
I got the motion from Mr. Blackwell, I got a second from Ms. Underwood, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.